Okay, I'll only do that for the TV not to get your attention. You can keep not paying attention if you want. So, you know, in the Select Board meeting of March 15th, 2023 with a roll call.
Kilcoyne, President.
Smith, President.
Krantz and President. Now, if you'll join me in question. And have you gentlemen had a chance to review the minutes and make any changes to comma?
No changes. We approve the minutes of our Select Board meeting on March 1st, 2023 as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda tonight is a public hearing for a release on Justice Hill Road. Location is Lot 8. So I would take motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. So we will open the public hearing and it's Lot 8 on Justice Hill Road and they are looking, giving us the right of first refusal. And it's been sent to all the boards and committees. And so far, everybody has declined, meaning the assessors, the conservation and the planning board. All their paperwork is in order according to the form. Anybody here to speak to Lot 8 on Justice Hill Road? Okay, John, any questions?
No, I don't think of such the applicat regarding the master plan or affordable housing or anything else. So I think the fact it's been approved by assessors, planning and conservation, I have no questions.
Same.
Okay, then. All those in favor?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion first. Yeah, you're right.
Second.
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay, so now we will continue with our regular meeting. And next thing on, we've invited the Board of Health in to give us, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. If you don't know our names by now, you will by the time we finish here. So we've invited the Board of Health in to give us a little update on what they've been up to.
Thank you very much. Just a little bit of a brief.
Want to introduce yourself, sir?
Absolutely. My name is David Faber. I'm the health agent here in Sterling. Just a couple of brief notes and updates pertaining to what the Board of Health's been up to. You recall that we were in front of the board maybe a month or a month and a half ago pertaining to 46 Main Street. It was some confusion with the bedroom count. Subsequent to that meeting, we worked with the applicant, the realtor and the homeowners and we came up with an affirmative outcome at that address. There was a two-bedroom permit that was issued back in the eighties that was retained. So collaboratively between the homeowners and the Board of Health, everybody was satisfied with that and a two-bedroom deed restriction was implemented so that there'd be no further confusion moving forward in further transactions.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Very positive outcome, actually. On another note, the Board of Health has recently updated and revised their fee structure. It was last revised in 2015. We took a look at that, you know, in trying to stay inconsistent with other towns, but we took a more stronger focus, I shouldn't say stronger, we had a greater focus on trying to make sure that the residents weren't impacted so badly with our fee structure, but we did want to keep it in line with other towns. The fees were revised effective January 1st of 2023 and in that process, we have had a lot of positive feedback from that, you know, indicating that, you know, that there were, everybody was happy with it. They weren't set so far out of line. We also, at the same time, however, we started this process with regards to amending our local regulations back in June of 2022. And for a couple of months or a few months through that process from June of 2002 to December of 2022, we finally took and revised our local regulations. That process underwent a, an advertisement process where it was advertised in the local news media. We had it advertised downstairs on the bulletin board. In addition to that particular topic, we have a lot of positive feedback there as well. We changed a fair amount of our regulations, our detailed regulations. And what we changed in those specific was that we now require deep observation holes for any home that's been constructed after 1995. And why we did that, because we have a, we don't have a strong database pertaining to soils in the area of these homes. In that process, what we did is we evaluated, you know, the cost on something like that. I know there's been a lot of controversy over this, but we evaluated the cost on something like this and what it came up with was about $600 or just under $600 for the soil evaluation, deep observational and the cost for the equipment to come in and do that. And what that does is it really provides a fine line, not only a fine line, but it provides a more detailed title five inspection process. There's no gray areas where it passed, it didn't pass. There's no controversy after the fact where someone might say, well, it failed this time, but it passed this time or vice versa. But again, we've got a lot of positive feedback from our professionals in the industry on that, indicating that, you know, again, it draws that line. It really dictates what is required and what is not required.
Excuse me, David. So is that, that needs to be done when you put the house on the market?
When you transfer the real estate.
Transfer, okay.
That's when that would occur. Now again, I'd like to be clear on that, too. That only applies to the properties that were constructed previous to 1995. Anything after that, we typically have good records of that. That also is a timeline when the soil evaluations were changed, whereas previous to 1995, in order to do a soil evaluation, they would dig a hole in the ground, look in the hole and say, okay, groundwater is at eight feet, six feet, wherever it was after they measured it. It's done more scientifically, more specifically. It isn't perfect, but it's done more scientifically now, subsequent to 1995. My last update. Recently, we were just notified that Governor Haley has made a recommendation for her fiscal 24 budget. They, she's increased her 24 budget tax relief to $12,000 for tax credit purposes for people who upgrade their septic system. That kind of goes in line with what we've been trying to do, what the Board of Health's been trying to do with regards to the fee structure, try not to burden the residents with regards to not having a willingness to upgrade a system that's failing or that's, you know, something's going wrong with it. The tax credit will benefit the homeowners as well as the upgrade will benefit the town. It's currently at $6,000. So the anticipation is fiscal '24, that it will go to 12,000, which will double that cost. And I believe as it is now, they'll get that over the course of four years.
Any questions, John?
Unless they change that and expand it a little bit, but eight years or 10 years, I don't think they're going to. Dave, just one question. Do other towns utilize the deep observation hole testing? I mean, I know it's the same for all and I gotta understand, you know, I mean, being consistent is a, is a good thing when people are guessing if some of this, well, widen it passes times, passing the next time. So I think it takes the mystery out of it. There is a little extra cost, but I mean, are there other towns that do this too or I suppose the rap, I don't know what point in the process?
It's funny, I had a seminar today and I was talking with several other agents and one specifically that I had a good conversation because he had heard that Sterling had just implemented this and they do that also. So, you know, there are other towns out there that do this across, across all 351. I don't believe they all do that. I'm certain I don't. But again, I think they're, you're finding more of a specific need for this and it helps eliminate the liability that he said, she said, well, you know, it passed last time, it didn't pass this time, or I gotta fail and I'm gonna get a second opinion, it passes and it just creates a lot of controversy and liability. This will mitigate that. Will controversy be eliminated entirely over any of this? I don't believe so, but I think it helps be more specific.
Well, if that tax credit passes, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good sum of money. It's 6,000 right now, I believe, over X number of years, if we capture it going forward until it's used, 12,000 doubles it. So I gotta think that that would, hopefully it does pass. I mean, I think it'll be a good relief to a lot of, a lot of homeowners buying and selling these, these properties.
Agreed. We don't want the residents, the taxpayers to, for whatever reason, we don't want them to not upgrade their systems. They're failing and it's a, it is a pollutant to the waters. We'd like to do whatever is best for them to get them motivated to do that. And if the fee structures had to be revised and increased a little bit, but it wasn't set so far out, if Governor Haley's tax credit helps out a little bit, hopefully everything will come together.
David?
Thank you. Very nice report. Appreciate so much.
Any questions for Mr. Faber?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. Thank you, Ann and Alan, too, for the support. Sure David appreciates it. Okay, and are you here for anything specific, sir? Okay. I just, I didn't want you to have to sit through the whole thing if you didn't. Now you have to. Because I know how fascinating it is. No, I just, yeah, I didn't know if you were waiting for something specific because then we could jump over it. Really, what we have next on our agenda is the intermunicipal agreement for a facilities manager. As many of you might know because you saw our meetings in the past, our facilities manager has gone and taken another job in another municipality. And so one of the suggestions was that we make the job a full-time job and share that with Wes Boilston. So now Wes Boilston and, and Bill have come up with a shared facilities manager job description and municipal agreement. Do you want to speak to that, Bill?
So, yeah, we talked about sharing that. We are both in a case where we are having vacancies. There's been for quite a while. Ours has obviously just been a couple of months. So I brought this idea up a couple of meetings ago and this is kind of what we grabbed from our shared building commissioner with Boilston slash the other agreements that we've seen. So right now it would be a 100% Sterling employee and it would, they would just pay their assessment rather than having two separate paychecks and everything else like the Boilston agreement. So it's fairly simple. We worked on the job description and updated from hours, a couple of things. They are discussing it at their meeting tonight. So once we get that, we can post the position and then figure out the division of costs for this position for this fiscal year and then both of us should have enough money this year and next year as we are currently budgeted. But having it in a full-time position, you know, allows a different pay scale and also the benefits that go with it.
And Wes Boilston will go 50/50 on this?
Insurance, retirement, everything.
Oh, nine yards.
Workers' comp. Something else that I can't think of off the top of my head.
John, any questions?
This seems very similar to the agreement with the building inspector.
Yep.
Not identical, but pretty close. We have, looks like we have the final say on any cost of living adjustments, you know, which Wes Boilston would either agree with or not. Under page two term, the last line, third line should say upon 30, if it's 30 days, written notice without penalty, it should be 30 in that little brackets. My, my, my page says 60 after saying 30, I don't know. That's.
Yeah, it should be 60.
And then down, the next one down on the renewal and the next to the last line, agreement shall expire on June 30 of 2024, not '23. Those are the only two type balls, but I get paid to do that stuff, so it forces me to do this every, every.
Yeah, I don't know if there's gonna be any major changes that happen. I know that they had discussed, putting in here that it wouldn't affect the school buildings since they are a, you know, one-town school, but that may be the only, only other major change. So if you're fine with that, how it is, then we can go and post the position. We'll contact the few people that did apply when we posted it just for Sterling and let them, we can do those interviews while the position's posted and get things rolling.
Well, maybe Mr. Smith would like to ask questions or have comments?
Do you have a job posting already written up for this?
So I'll just, I'll modify the, the one that we did just for Sterling. Throw it out to the MMA and MMA site and probably a couple of other places.
So he or she reports to you here and they report, he or she reports to town administrator Wes Boilston for their work?
Yeah. So it'd be roughly 13 buildings between the two towns, so they wouldn't be doing, you know, the, we'd far most of the cleaning in all of our buildings, but doing some of the higher level, you know, capital planning that we need and where we don't. And then if an emergency happens, you know, that would be for them.
Yeah, this isn't just about cleaning. This is about, as you said, you know, budgets, capital request. Joe says it's not ever. Forget it. So if we're all set with that, do, does anybody have any questions? Joe, Kirsten, Joe, Richard? No? Okay. Then we will move along and I would entertain a motion to agree to move this intermunicipal agreement forward for the facilities manager.
I'll move that.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then roll call vote?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Okay. And our next agenda item is approve the seasonal alcohol permit for Sterling National Country Club. I said, no, they don't have to drink over there.
Maybe on the golf course, but not inside.
Nope.
Can't go on Lancaster property anyway.
That's true.
No, I think they've done a good job. I don't think they've had any major issues over there from, you know, the last year, the year to year, so I'm okay with it.
Any questions on this, David?
Nope, I'm good with it.
And I have no questions. There hasn't been a problem there for a very, very long time as far as the drinking costs. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the seasonal license for Sterling National?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye.
Fun one.
Yeah, so.
Joe can take over from here anyway.
No, this is, we're, tonight we're going through the draft warrant articles on what to support, not the monetary articles. We're not doing that this evening and this is just to get that step done. The monetary articles, there's still some things out there that need to be finessed.
They're off the table.
Pretty much. Get a problem with that, Joe?
Well, I had some comments to build, but you've got the comments already.
Well, comments, but you're talking financial comments, right?
About the way the warrants worded and things.
Okay, and we can finesse that. So, but as far as any of the monetary stuff is, I'd like to wait for that because that's gonna take a little bit longer for us, you know, between the finance committee, because the finance and capital will both be here for when we go through those articles. Okay, so this, these are just the ones that, you know, don't have an impact on, on your budget, on our budget. So where would you like to begin? It's really towards the back and it's mostly the.
So 17 starts anything that doesn't have many dollar figures. So that section from 17 on is the personnel and human resource bylaws. First one is the job description. I did catch one typo in there for the youth services director. Should be under number grade four. I had gone back and forth with Betsy on that one and it should be in grade four, not three. It would be, it currently falls with the library associate two. Alex asked about that the other day, previous director, and I had discussed that. Might have been updated on the draft I sent out again today.
Okay, so this is the job classification that was just completed and just changes the bylaws.
Yeah, so it updates what's currently on there, which only had, I think, five or six total grades.
Yep. Any questions on that one? John?
I'm okay with that.
David?
Same, support that.
So the, I would take a motion to support Article 17?
I'll move, we support Article 17 as presented.
I think we need to say we support the job classification, Article 17, in case that article number changes as we move forward.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, if, if you want to go through the entire personnel one, I'm just gonna write whether you guys support it or not and then if it changes the number, if we have to add or subtract something.
Okay. So the next one we're looking at is the compensation schedule.
So this would reflect the 3% COLA from '23 going into '24 with the grades as presented.
Any question on that? John, David?
Nope.
19 reflects the same for the call higher force.
Okay.
The stipend positions have been updated. No real change other than I believe we put in the actual order of registrars, they had been getting a certain amount. This just kind of memorializes it as an actual stipended position. And there are three of them. That's all in the town clerk's.
Are those the same builders before, last year?
They were getting an hourly rate, but it fluctuated, so it's just much easier being a stipend.
Yep.
And it's roughly above that much money, so.
Yep.
Any questions on that? 21 would be the miscellaneous positions and a lot of them were updated to reflect the state minimum because some of them were less than the 15 that it is currently. And if in the case that the state minimum does increase, we don't have to change it from whatever that specific dollar figure is there. So that's. 22 would be replacing the longevity schedule. Currently, it's only going up to 15 years and it is percentages. This would change it to dollar figures in one-time payments and goes out to 35 years, which is kind of the definition of longevity.
Yeah, maybe makes it that far.
No, we have a couple over 30.
Yeah.
That's probably easier, too, I would think, for budgeting purposes, you have the exact number.
That, and then it keeps people on here, you know, their salary schedule as opposed to being 2% more, 3% more. It's just a little bit easier on that. So now we can do some, some math, who gets what depending on when, when they complete their year. So if you want to take a vote on the personnel bylaw stuff?
About 17.
17 to 21?
Two.
22. That way, if they move, it's just the personnel bylaw.
Yeah, we, so, current Article 17 through 22. Should I say pending further changes? Hopefully there won't be any, right?
It may just be the article number.
The article numbers.
If something gets added or subtracted or moved around.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Ready for the next section?
Yep.
We have three local acceptance statutes, one from the town clerk, one from the veterans' agent and one from us. The nomination papers would basically make it that it would be a deadline on the weekday as opposed to the weekend. So it would be for, whatever it says, 48 hours, 48 weekday hours prior to the final day. That way the town clerk or assistant town clerk or somebody doesn't have to sit there waiting for nomination papers with all the races that we have.
We actually have some races this year.
We do.
And there's still time.
Tomorrow's the last day.
Just FYI, tomorrow, come get your nomination papers. Planning board is looking. Who else is looking? Everybody's looking. Just because there's somebody running doesn't mean that you can't put in your papers also. Make it a contest, make it exciting. We'll get popcorn and everything.
Somebody brought us popcorn once, twice. I didn't get any the second day.
Okay, so the nomination papers, okay, that's kind of straightforward and that's from the town clerk?
Yeah.
I move we accept that one, we'll go one at a time, I guess, right?
Yeah, we'll go through the other one. Veterans' property tax perception.
Yeah, this was from the veterans' agent and that would be reducing the amount of years that a veteran that wouldn't qualify for this exemption has to be in town from five years to one year. At this point, it affects one or two individuals in town. There are many that receive it already, but they've been here the five years or many more.
Okay.
And the last one would be the municipal officer indemnification. We discussed this at a previous meeting, Chapter 258, Section 13. We already have that coverage in our insurance, but this would just memorialize it.
We do have the coverage, okay. Good.
So those are the MGL acceptances, if you want to take any action.
These three, I'll move, do we accept articles?
23 to 25.
23, 24 and 25.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Okay. And trash user fees.
So I do need some more information from Ryan, but this would current, change the current bylaw, which says basically that we cannot be charged for anything above and beyond, obviously, now that we are basing it, you have your X amount of gallons of trash and X amount of gallons of recycling. This would allow charging for beyond that amount.
Charging who? Like if I wanted another bucket?
It wouldn't be so much for a bucket, but this would allow them to charge in the case that we, that folks go above that. So I need a little more information from Ryan.
Yeah, because one of the questions that we get is, you know, people are willing to pay for that extra bin.
Right.
So would this be part of that or?
Okay, maybe a little more information from Ryan specifically, the town council on it. So that would probably go in the summary, but this would, it's for folks that go above their maximum weekly allowance.
Okay, so if you could.
Yeah, so the summary I'll, I'll get, I'll get.
All right.
Because that'll be a question for sure.
Because that'll be a question for sure.
Oh, definitely.
At some point, what, what do I get a section? Why, you know, an example, that's all.
This is one of the areas I had in common, Bill. The summary is inconsistent with the wording before. It should be unified there. And it's, it's really not clear.
Excuse me, sir. Would you like to introduce yourself as you make these comments? And possibly wait for the chair to call on you?
Is that the, any other comments section?
Well, what do you, well, introduce yourself anyway.
My name is Joseph King to Elliot Road.
Thank you.
Member of the Finance Committee.
Good job. And a comment.
Yeah, my comment was that I, I think the wording needs to be clarified because it, it stays in the summer beyond what is currently provided. We don't know what is currently provided because it hasn't been defined in the foregoing.
What's your currently provided is a ninety-six gallon for this and seventy-two for that, so.
You should say that.
And I'll get my summary from people I need to get it from.
Yeah, and that, that is actually a, a Ryan article. So I'm sure between Ryan and Bill, they will give an appropriate class, uh, clarification.
And also, the other clarification would be, uh, a permanent adjustment or a temporary. In other words, is it possible to go over the limit temporarily using this fee schedule? Or once you're in, you're in for the entire duration? That should be clarified as well. That is, you get the extra bin and you pay for the extra bin. It's perpetual until you decide to figure out how to undo it with Ryan, I guess, and give it.
Just go around the neighborhood and you pick up everybody's trash and pay for it. It's a goodwill gesture for the neighbors.
Anyways.
Not here yet.
I bring it up because trash is a controversial thing in any town.
I was going to say, this probably has the potential for the lengthiest commentary at town meeting.
I would imagine you're right, John.
Not if Mr. King gets flat tires before he's.
Not if we, not if we get all the wording right, John.
I haven't seen the Animal Control Articles yet.
All right, so we're going to hang on to Article Twenty-Six until Ryan gets back to us and you and Ryan iron it out.
Next one would be the Accessory Dwelling Unit Bylaws. Uh, Twenty-seven is the primary one. Twenty-eight would be the one that we would try and go for if Twenty-seven doesn't passes, doesn't pass. Uh, so Twenty-seven would be an update to make, if you want to speak on it, you can.
I was going to say, Kirsten, you want to go through this with us? Introduce yourself and this is your article.
It is.
I know.
Here's the new member of the Planning Board. So what we were doing is just... There were people who were trying to abuse the old bylaw and basically try and build a second home on their property. So what we've done is set forth rules that you need to follow in order to prevent people from just trying to build a second home with barrage and deck and everything on their property. It is an accessory dwelling unit and that is all it is. And we've had some issues with whether or not we want to keep it attached or detached. But we've, I think we've set a bunch of guidelines to follow to make sure that, um, people don't try and take advantage of how it's currently written.
Yes, clarifies what we passed at last meet, last year's town meeting and make things a little more specific so that some of these issues don't arise that we've already seen in the last year.
And Twenty-eight goes along with that also?
In the case that Twenty-seven doesn't pass, this would be a fallback article, uh, which just takes out a couple smaller things, um, for the same purpose. But they would be the more, um... Was that the well part of it? Well, septic part? Yeah.
So I just, I hate to get into it, but, uh, but, uh, on the second page, under number B-eleven. I think it's scratched out. I just want to see if I can understand this one versus how it was before. And this is scratched, this is lining out for a by right ADU accessory dwelling unit. The outside appearance of the single-family dwelling is and remains that of a single-family dwelling. So if I'm looking at this total outsider and nothing to do with it anyway, but... And if I see it, it's, it's telling me that, uh, I don't have to have my new house or structure looking like a single-family unit. Is that, is that right? Or?
The scratched out parts will disappear.
Right.
It's totally disappeared, so it really has nothing to do with the prior bylaw.
That's what's currently in there.
That's what's in there now.
The part that's in it, the italics will be added.
Yep.
And then what's in there is, yeah, ADU must maintain, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, okay.
Anything you see scratched out is just what it exists now.
Right.
And then the italics is the new version.
Okay. Okay, that's good. I'll read through beforehand anyway, the whole thing, but.
Well, I know that the Planning Board has worked long and hard on this as well as working with the DVA, so I'm, uh, I'm fine with, um, supporting what they put forward.
Second.
And the third item, number twenty-nine, is the Temporary Moratorium on Non-Medical Marijuana Establishments. It's currently in the bylaw. Uh, we have passed everything that we need to correctly. So this really doesn't need to be in there anymore. Uh, we are, have the current one item or one, one establishment. That's, uh, pretty much all we are allowed to have.
So this is just an excess bylaw in there that we really don't need anymore? Any question on that?
I recall Mr. Wallace when he came in explaining that a little bit as well as this accessory dwelling unit thing, so. No, I don't. I think it simplifies it, to be honest with you. So.
David? All set? And then Article Thirty.
Number Thirty is the Acceptance of Primrose Lane. I think we've gone over this, I don't know, a couple dozen times and probably one more next meeting. Uh, it has to be a public hearing, so, um, we will, uh, accept that as a public road. So those, uh, numbers. Twenty-seven, twenty-six through, or Twenty-seven, since you're going to hold Twenty-six for now, through Thirty?
Yep.
Yeah. Except those.
Second.
All those in favor?
A little coin high.
Second.
Krantz and I.
And then we have two other ones, one, uh, here through, um... I guess they don't really have a section name. This would be the West Sterling Schoolhouse Referendum question we had discussed. So the question would be to see if the town should keep, maintain, and update the West Sterling Schoolhouse located adjacent to the intersection at sixty-two and one forty. Uh, it would be an affirmative vote to keep it. Just guessing on my sentiments or your sentiments, that it may not be a recommendation.
So this is the town's vote to keep and maintain.
So a yes vote would keep and maintain. And we would use the funds that have already been approved. A no vote would be, we don't want that and it may be the result of dispossessing the town of it.
Don't we need another article because if it's a yes vote? We need to vote in the monies that they have requested from the Capitol.
There's still thirteen thousand in previous year articles, so.
Not going to even, whatever they requested this year, we're not going to do it.
They haven't recommended the, the new money for that, so.
Okay. So this is it. Do you, do you want to keep it or don't you?
Yeah.
And if you keep it, you're going to have to look at a situation similar to the eighteen thirty-five. You know, you're going to need a septic and ADA compliance. Oh, yeah, we need a new foundation, portico, et cetera, and so on. Okay. So a no vote would mean?
The Select Board would make decisions relative to that.
Okay. Any questions, John?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm kind of glad it says does not, uh, Select Board does not recommend. Oh, not that I'm against these, you know, historical houses, but as a taxpayer, in my first, I got two questions. I'd say, okay, what is this going to cost now and going forward? And what are we going to use it for? And I think unless those two questions are addressed, I don't see how anybody, you know, could vote yes. I mean, I, I mean, as much as we all like these buildings that go back two hundred years or more, you know? But you're going to have a use and, and, and you just can't keep pouring money into it year after year after year, and you're not sure. I mean, there's no, there's no nothing, there's no running water, there's no heat, so. You know, I think, what are we using it for? You know, if you have meetings, whatever, you're going to have all these other things in there too, so.
Well, you guys decide if you want to recommend it or not. I was just reading the.
I hear you, I'm not, I'm just.
So you may want to vote these two separately.
Well, I mean, I think it's okay to put it in as written because we're not, we don't, not recommending it. But we're going to, we're the ones who are going to have to address those questions, I think. Well, the Historical Commission should be right out of our side, I would hope.
They will give us their recommendations, which I think may be different.
Well.
Yeah.
We sat at the Finance and the Capital Committee meeting and this was generally the discussion, you know? Do we want to continue? What are you going to use it for? Et cetera, and so on. So I don't think they had a lot of support at the Capitol or Finance level either.
May I speak, Madam Chair?
And you act, who's there?
Joseph King to Elliot.
I'm getting old, you know what I'm saying?
Joseph King to Elliot Road, Vice Chair of the FINCO.
Yeah.
Can we add recommendation? Finance Committee does not recommend approval to that.
I think that, that's an important piece of it.
Because we did not recommend approval. Because of all the things it's saying here. And there's a little bit of conflict in my mind, anyway, between this is the non-binding referendum of annual town meeting voters and then the last sentence that said a no vote may result. And I understand it says may result, the town dispossessing itself of the asset. So should we define the process? I, I would imagine if it's a non-binding referendum, some other action like the Select Board has to bring this up and vote on dispossessing it in the future as part of that, so.
Yeah, this is to get a sense of the legislative branch. Ultimately, it would be up to them what they want to do.
So I guess I'm pointing out, should we have a little bit of clarifying words of, you know, if you vote it down, this is what may happen, you know? It may go to Select Board and Select Board may make the decision to dispossess it.
So it's going to happen. What we doing about it, I don't know. I mean, that's the fact they sit here tonight, I don't know.
Well, you might have an organization that would be interested in buying it. Really?
True.
You know, um, it's, this is just a question, is does the town want to continue to pour the money into a building that we don't seem to have a use for? That it's just going to cost us more and more as we go down the road? So when it gets to the Board of Selectmen, I mean, one of the recommendations could be, sell it. And maybe you have a group that comes in and wants to buy it and wants to work on it. I mean, there's a lot of people that like to do restoration on older buildings. So you think that we might want to do a little bit more clarification there?
Yeah, it is.
The general, the gen, my, the general thought is that we would support this. Possibly, we haven't taken a vote yet, but, um... And then you also want to add the Finance Committee to it, which.
Yes, because we did take a vote on that one.
Right. Capitol did too, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
So both Finance and Capitol.
Finance and Capitol.
Yeah, so, um, in this particular instance, I would, uh, go for a motion to support Article Thirty-One, the West Sterling Schoolhouse Referendum.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, we'll put it before the voters.
So if we support this, we're supporting the fact that town's going to keep this building?
No.
Okay. You've already voted that it's going to be on here.
Hey, we just want this for everybody to have their two cents on.
Yeah, we're just going to
Second.
make it part of the warrant. Okay. All those in favor?
A little coin high.
Second.
Krantz and I.
So is there a board recommendation?
Yeah, we're, we're not supporting it.
Oh, I thought you just said that you were just asking to put it on the warrant.
No, no, we're not supporting, we do not recommend approval.
So it's fine, it's written, I'll add Capitol and Finance.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay, we're on the same page.
Yes, we are, we're on page twenty-six. And then where did this one come from? This is the first I've heard from it or heard of it?
This is from Recreation, um, about naming one of the softball fields, Softball Field One, um, for Joanne Cummings for her years of service. So the Recreation, about thirty-five years.
That's nice, man. So do, do any of you know Joanne Cummings? She lost, yeah, she's been before the Finance with you and David. All right, well, Joanne has given a lot of years, obviously, to the Recreation Program and just retired last year from Recreation. You know, and she's been the driving force behind so many things, including, um, the softball fields as we move forward, so, um, no worries, Jo, it doesn't cost any money. We could probably even run a fundraiser for the signage. We'll see how it goes. My question would be, did anybody talk to Joanne about this?
I can check.
Definitely, she needs to be involved. Not having any problems with it.
No. So I'd entertain a motion to.
Pending her, yeah, I'll move it when you approve Article Thirty-Two, pending, uh, her approval as well.
Second.
All those in favor?
A little coin high.
Second.
Again, I'd just like to know what Joanne's feedback is. I think it's a great gesture, you know, as, as we move forward. Okay, then, um...
There are two citizens petitions, which you guys typically do not take any action on. They would be principal use changes. Uh, one would be for the, um, open lot storage of materials in commercial... And that spacing got a little messed up. And the second.
I'm sorry, Bill, it's going from a special permit to, to?
No. Special permit to no.
To no, okay.
I got to get that back one line. Or one column. And then the second one would be allowing through special permit retail sales, including, uh, antique shops in rural residential by special permit from no.
So that's just us personally voting on it whenever it comes.
That will go to the town meeting and.
Did we have any hearings on these yet?
We're supposed to, no, the end of this month.
Oh, that's on our next meeting? Well, I think what we do is we go to the hearings and I, then I am, I'm very familiar with, this is Mr., I can't say your last, I'm going to go with Jo.
Yeah, Jo's fine.
So much easier.
That was changed on the twenty-twenty-one, um, town meeting under consent vote with the title of daycare. And they had a whole bunch of listings and that was at the very bottom. And I think it was hidden, not really well looked at. People are in cars, you know, voting for that. I, and it's, um, it's been a, been a pain, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it being on there.
So we have no choice? Yeah, and then we'll have the, um, hearings as we move forward on any of the zoning. So, um... And... Okay, so those are the zoning.
And then the last five would be Animal Control Bylaws.
And those aren't completed as, as of yet, are they?
They are. So the first one, Thirty-five, I'm just going to read the summary. Purpose of this article is to update the definition for euthanasia in accordance with MGL, to update definitions of nuisance, spay, and neuter to more modern and socially acceptable terminology and to eliminate the term feral cat as it appears nowhere else in the bylaws.
Okay.
The next one would be Section Three of Chapter Eighteen. And that would, uh, bring the Animal Control Bylaws regarding rabies vaccination into compliance with GL-one-forty, Section One-Forty-five-B, with the inclusion of cats and update to the deadline for vaccinating newly acquired animals or animals new to the Commonwealth and update, uh, the fine for violation of the section. Next one was. Next one would update Section 4 of Chapter 18 of the bylaws, and that one is the purpose to update the penalties for violations in that section, special permits in kennels, kennel licenses in accordance with the fines stated in MGL, Chapter 140, Section 137A, kennel licenses. Next one, update Section 6 of Chapter 18, to include the newest edition of Massachusetts Animal Control Laws, GL 140, Section 174F, to Sterling's animal control bylaws, to ensure the protection of animals by animal control, law enforcement officers, and firefighters when an animal was found inside an excessively hot or cold vehicle, and to allow animal control to enforce penalties for this offense. And the last one, I think I lost the summary there, so this would just change the holding time from 10 to 7 days for municipal impound of an animal.
And these were all approved by the Animal Control Board as well?
Yeah, they're meeting last Monday or Tuesday. And then the last one is the annual town election, which just lets us know what seats are open. So I don't know if you want to vote yet on any of the animal control ones.
Bill, and here I have Article 40, principal use change?
Yeah, that's the citizen's petition, so that just goes back to the other one.
Yeah.
I didn't get the, I printed it out, and then we got the animal control after it, so things got a little copped up.
All right. As far as supporting the animal control articles, you want us to vote on those?
It's up to you folks.
Do you want to look at them a little bit more, John?
Yeah.
Before, okay.
I would.
We're going to hold off on that one too. All of them for the animal control. See where John lands?
Yeah, I do.
How about you?
Let's see where John lands.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah. John's very interested in that one.
So.
I know, he wants a dog park too. So, all right, so that's that, and then we have, anybody have any more comments? No. All right, so then we'll go to the Town Administrator's Report?
Yeah, sure.
Looks like he's been busy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know, we've discussed that. The Small Town Administrators Group did provide some testimony to the House Committee, House and Senate Joint Committees on Transportation on Chapter 90, which is the road money that comes, obviously. They argue often that there are other programs, small bridge and some other ones, bottleneck reduction that provide it, but there's a lot of towns that don't qualify for a lot of those, and there's not a lot of bridges that, well, there's a lot of bridges that fall into this 25-foot one, but sometimes the funding doesn't go all the way on it. This would be to try and increase the amount of Chapter 90 funding. Obviously, you live with that daily, so we get about $420,000, $430,000 from the state. Pretty much double that would be where you need to fall just to maintain what you have, so. Something is better than nothing, but people really are concerned about their roads, and $400,000 doesn't go that far. I know prices have come down a little bit on paving, but, you know, $100 in place isn't, isn't a lot to ask for per time. And Governor's announcement that there's going to be a Rural Policy Director by population, we typically don't meet that standard, but are, per capita, based on land, we do, so we do qualify for some rural assistance in some things. We'll see how that works out. Steve did submit an expression of interest in the Community One Stop Grant Portal for the Performance Zone. That would be seeking help from Mass Development on how we may change that in the future. Obviously, we've tried it a couple times. It was voted down last year?
Yes, it was.
Last year at the town meeting, so it would have two years, so next town meeting, we could bring it up to change that zoning. Either you can do nothing in it, or you can do everything in it, it's not very clear. So we need to make that clearer as to what is allowed or not allowed. As you know, we received the DLTDA funding for the MBTA adjacent communities. We are an adjacent community, so we have to allow somewhere in town multifamily by right. So we are working with some property owners to see if we can find a spot in order to comply. If we do not end up complying, we would be at risk of losing some grant opportunities. We know one of them is Mass Works, which we plan on properly applying for for the downtown project. There was something that came out fairly recently from the state that they have doubled down on how serious they are, and even if it doesn't pass, you still have to pass it.
Yeah.
Not a big fan of that. The IMA for facilities, we've talked about. Mr. Mackey and Sherry, Matt Morrow, Ryan, and me, we've all gone over a few things on the beach bathroom and the ADA grant that we received, and that has to be spent by the end of this fiscal year, so we have received our quotes from the folks that we need to, so hopefully we can get that rolling as soon as we get some halfway decent weather. Just another update on the beach, you know, we're moving forward with the plans, hopefully getting to a point where that can get approved by Conservation, and, you know, we can actually see that DCR funding be used for the actual improvements to the drainage and/or the beautification there. We were supposed to have a Conservation Commission interview today, but that person had accepted another job, so that position remains open, and we will be posting the position of Assistant Town Clerk as she is leaving for the town to hold.
Okay, slow down. You just married those two together.
Terraced news.
For a conservation agent.
Conservation agent and an assistant town clerk.
And a, no, and an assistant town clerk, just don't sleep. You know, people might want to know, apply. Town clerk and conservation, two different.
Yes, both are on the website.
Okay. And you're, you haven't posted them, you're going to post them?
Both are posted.
They are posted, town clerk assistant also?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe.
Yes.
They're currently.
Which is why we post them. We don't post a job if somebody's still sitting in it, Jo, wouldn't be nice.
No, I mean an addition, as opposed to addition.
Oh, my Lord, no, Jo, it's the same job. No, Michelle Boyce, who's been with us for a while, has taken another job in another community. Yeah, I know. Going to miss her little smile and her sparkling personality, but, so she'll be leaving in a couple of weeks. And then the conservation agent had left, what, a month ago or so? And she went for a full-time job up in Lunenburg.
Didn't she just start recently?
Yes, she did, Jo, as a matter of fact. And then Lunenburg, you know, kind of put a stick out there because they're willing to pay.
This is what's happening.
So, sorry, Bill.
I think that's about it.
Any questions for Bill, John?
No, I think it's pretty comprehensive, things are moving ahead and everything. The only question, I guess, is the 1835 septic de-eezement, how that's going. It's still.
So they did their inspection, the appraisal, so that's coming through. We've got the paperwork we need from town council, so now we just need some sign-offs from the two on Main Street, and the one where we're taking the easement, a little bit more there, and then the DPW Board will have to vote on that order of taking. It'll have to get registered, the people will have to be compensated, and then we can talk about actually doing construction.
David, any questions for?
Just keep the fire going, Bill, because you've got a lot of irons in it. It's going to be a pretty.
Feast or famine.
Busy upcoming season, it appears.
Tom, did you have something? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand going. Okay, well, before we go any further, I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to both the DPW and the Sterling Municipal Light. The last couple of days, the guys have been out there.
Yeah.
We are, it makes me proud to think that we are in such good shape as opposed to other. I have a brother whose power is still out since yesterday morning. And then I also want to mention again, we still have scholarships available, and how many applications do we have? Tom, for scholarships?
None so far.
I thought we had one.
No, we had questions on my question.
Okay. All right, and then the other thing I want to mention, you can still get papers for any of the positions that are listed on the website, whether somebody's going or not for it. But mark your calendars, whether you're running or you just want to participate in Candidates Night, which is going to be April 24th at 7 o'clock in this room, and it will be filmed. Be ready. And David, did you have something today?
I have a few things, actually.
Oh, great, that's super.
So I'd like to thank the Police and Fire Departments, as well as the DPW and Light Department, because when we have a storm such as we just had, it puts a tremendous burden on all the departments. And it's quite chaotic, it's pretty exciting, but it's chaotic, so thank you for that.
Running around down trees and wires and.
Yeah, right, right, you have to leave a cruiser parked because you've got a high tension wire running across the road.
Yeah.
It takes a, you know, a cruiser out of service for an accident or something, it's entertaining.
Jesus.
What? That's what I do. So I'd just like to remind people that on April 22nd, Saturday, is Sterling Cleanup Day. We will meet at the Common, right down here, at 10:00 a.m. Some refreshments and coffee will be available. At that time will be given you, or you will perhaps suggest a section of roadway that you could be assigned to accumulate the litter. The bags will be left alongside the road for the DPW to pick up later on that week. So come on down, bring your family, your friends, get back to the community, and let's all make Sterling a better place to live.
That's anyway?
Yeah, cleaner place.
What was the date on that?
That would be April 22nd, it's a Saturday, with a rain date, April 29th.
Anything else, David?
That was all.
Okay.
I'd just echo what you and David have said about the DPW Sterling Light and Fire and everybody. Terrific job, I mean, there's a lot of power outages all over the place, trees are down. A lot of cleanup coming up, but I think they did a really fabulous job. I want to thank Michelle Boyce for her time here, and wish her nothing but the best. She was a pleasure to work with down at the Town Clerk's Office, we'll definitely miss her. And I also want to thank Bill, I mean, for putting together this 2024 Budget Plan, Budget and Capital Plan, it's a very comprehensive, in-depth look at our overall finances, which I'm sure Jo approves of, and it's something we should have a look at before town meeting. It makes a good template to explain to the people where we are and why, and puts it all in one place. Plus, I think it's on the website too, isn't it?
Not yet.
Okay, well, not a lot of changes, there's going to be some, of course, but it does a great job, and it's transparent, you've got to love transparency, so. Oh, and the cleanup, yeah, I'm ready to sign on with Mr. Mackey for that too.
Oh, no, Mr. Smith's at large in charge, yeah.
Oh, I see, Chairman, okay.
Joe, anything? We usually do like a little bit of a public session if you want to throw in? Nope?
I guess I will, right on, right? Just one, I've been at meetings lately a little bit, I try and stay beginning to end, don't like to screw down after my subject's done, I don't think that's fair.
More to health left.
I know, I know, and I want to comment on that too a little bit, but I just feel like I like to get to hear, listen before you speak, so always been treated pretty well by everybody, so appreciate all the opportunities. It's there, I kind of put my name at half as zoning board, so, because I went to the meeting, I went, yeah, I just let this happen unbeknownly and realized that people really are here, so, you know, not that I got guilted into it, I just said I should do something, so. Did a lot with soccer growing up and stuff in the town, kind of stayed out for a little while, now I'm coming back in a little bit.
Well, you do know that tomorrow you can still pick up some papers.
I'm, I like to wade, okay? We've just hit the feet wet, you know, you don't, you don't know how deep the water is, you don't jump in, so you just kind of.
Not that deep.
Well, then I don't want to hit my head when I jump in.
And we have life rafts.
But yes.
Okay, thanks.
We can put you in the dunk pad.
Yeah. Believe me, I get dunked enough at home, so I'm good.
Well, thanks for coming, and no, I mean, these are filmed every week. You can go on the computer and actually watch them if you want.
I've read through some stuff online and stuff, so I know where to go.
Yep. Mr. Mackey, anything for you?
All set, thank you.
Wish you sunshine and lollipops in your trip to Arizona.
Ooh, I'm stripped.
All right, Mr. King, I'm afraid to ask.
Yeah, you probably should be afraid.
All right, we'll skip over Kristen, anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
You're all set, Kristen's all set, comma?
I'm all set.
All right. So we're all set? I'd introduce the motion.
What you do, Josh?
Second.
All those who favor?
Cool, coin and I.
You know there won't be a discussion. Krantz and I. Jo likes me to throw in that discussion.